Okay, perfect. So I think we can start, no? But this is... Ah, this is on? Yes, okay, perfect. Okay, perfect. So let us, let us start. Thank you, everybody, for joining us here in the room and then through Zoom as well. So this is the afternoon special session of the African Network of Women in Astronomy. And just briefly, the first 10 minutes will be just the overview, where we are. And then Vanessa will go, and Vanessa will go ahead to a bit summarize AFNO awards that we heard about this morning as well. And then Carolina will summarize the future plans. And the last half an hour will be left for, for the discussion part. And we suggested a topic to discuss about the strategies that we can use for empowering more girls and women in science through astronomy. So I will just now go briefly through the summary of the work. So basically, this is just a reminder how through astronomy we can contribute to, to the UN 2030 agenda. And it's just to remind us that actually astronomy can really contribute either in short or longer term to basically all sustainable development goals, especially those that here I marked with bold lines, such as the quality education, gender equality, renewable energies, and so on. And basically, for all of these sustainable development goals, the SDG V that is focused on gender equality really plays the fundamental role in this agenda. So we cannot achieve any of the sustainable development goals without achieving really gender equality. It's something just to have in our mind all the time when we speak about the development. So this is another reminder about the current gender gap in science with the data from 2019. These are for now the best data that we have under UNESCO and Women in Science, where it's been seen that actually out of all researchers that we have in the world, less than 30% are women. And then when we come to the African continent, in average, it's actually less than 25%. And here you can see now for different African countries. So there are a few of those countries that the fraction comes even to close to 50%, like in Tunisia, South Africa. But then we also have many countries that are having very low fraction, below 20%, or even those that have only few percent, like Chad, that is 5% of women. Ethiopia, where I'm based, is here, it's 13% of all scientists that are women. But then when we come to the fundamental sciences, all of these numbers drop a lot. And this is again something to have in mind that I always like to remind us. I'm sure that for the community that is here, we are very well known. Why having, speaking about gender gap and trying to, to improve the gender gap that we have in science is really important. The comparison that I like to make always is on one side, why do we care about, why shall we care much about the gender gap in science? This is the question that we definitely get very often. And related with this is the argument that, well, why gender gap is important if we, in any case, have sufficient people to do science? So if men can do the science, then why do we care, you know, that there are more women? But then I always like to make, in line with this, another question that is related with the social economical status, no? So if rich people can do all the job, then is it really important to empower poor people and underprivileged groups? So the main point to always have in mind is that actually, if we don't bring the same opportunities to everybody independently on the gender, social economical status, we are actually losing huge capacities, huge potentials, and people who can change the aspect of our life and change our world. And that's the main point. So definitely, we do have to empower women. And this is another point to just remind us that astronomy is really an emerging science in Africa. So now, taking all of these points into account, we come to the African Network of Women in Astronomy. So the idea behind, for those of you who are not aware of AFNOA and you are hearing for the very first time, the idea for AFNOA actually came in 2019. That's when the group of six of us came together. It was a bit inspired with the Nature Research Award that I received. And then I decided half of that award that I want to dedicate for creating this network. And then there are, there were six of us who came together. And we started speaking about creating this network of women, African Network of Women in Astronomy. And then when in 2019, African Astronomical Society was established in, in more or less similar time, in 2020, we actually got in touch with AFFAS and suggested that we join this network as one of the subcommittees. So basically, AFNOA, the idea of AFNOA comes from these huge differences. I mean, all this background that I just explained. And then the fact that astronomy is one of emerging fields. And then the fact that we want women to be active participants of all these developments in astronomy and science. And that through these women, we can empower women that are currently there. And then through them inspire many, many others. And then officially, we launched in collaboration with African Astronomical Society as one of its subcommittees, we launched AFFAS, AFNOA, sorry, in January last year. So now it's a bit more than one year. In January this year, we celebrated one year of AFNOA. And here you can see the, the board, the committee of AFNOA. So we have Somaya, who is representing the northern part of Africa. We have Vanessa, Carolina representing the southern part. And then Nana and Salma, who joined us recently. Welcome, Salma, presenting the western part. And then Priscilla and myself for the eastern part. So basically, up to now, in this last year, we put a lot of efforts in promoting AFNOA so that we can get more and more members. And you can see that by now, we have almost 120 members, actually, like 180, 19 now, from more than 30 countries. And here you can see the list of some of the countries that are from where people are coming. The majority, of course, from, from Africa. So what is interesting that about 80% of members are women and then about 20% are men. And this is something that we always like to highlight, that AFNOA, although it is in the, in the name we have, that it's African Network of Women in Astronomy, which means with that name, we want to highlight that we are focused on girls, women, and improving the gender gap in science. But it doesn't mean that all the members are women. And we actually welcome men because the gender gap that we have is a problem of the whole society. And we cannot improve the situation if we all jointly don't work together. So men are very welcome and actually it's beneficial for all of you because you will be inside the network and getting different announcements, opportunities, being able to participate in trainings and so on. So actually, it's beneficial being part of the network. So this is something again that is important, that more than 80% of our members are actually young people. So either MSc students, PhD students, or early career researchers. So that means that AFNOA is really timing to, on one side, strengthen the links. Vanessa, can you let me know when two minutes are left? I started 20, 27, I think. Yes, thank you. So AFNOA is really timing, on one side, to strengthen the links between the female, male researchers' collaborations, then to strengthen the professional leadership skills, to attract more girls to STEM. And then what we also want is to understand across the continent, what are the principal factors for girls to not choose more STEM fields? And how actually we can improve that, you know? Which is a very complex thing because it varies a lot from country to country, from one ethnic group to another, one region to another, and so on. So there is a lot of work. This is basically an endless work, but we want to be a part of that. So here you can see at the beginning, before we were launched officially, what is the list of activities that under the board we put as, as important, you know? So one was to create the network in this, for the, for the first year, you know? To create the network, to start organizing courses and trainings, to give visibility to women in astronomy through different activities, to do the follow-up of the professional status of women in astronomy so that we can see how women are progressing and to make sure that we don't lose them. So that those who have mastered, they get the PhD. Those that get the PhD, they maintain, they stay in the field so that we can support each other. Then to support the research activities of women in astronomy through the supervision, the joint collaborations, and so on. To start organizing and giving two annual awards. To organize the organization participation in outreach activities, public awareness. Then regarding the follow-up, this is something to be enforced for this year and including the support of the MSc PhD students that in the first year, we didn't really start. Organization of two annual awards. So this is something that we fully achieved. Vanessa will say more about it. And then the outreach activities, we started collecting the outreach, the short videos that now we are working on combining into one big video that will be used for the outreach. And soon we will open the call for the seed funding for the outreach activities within the community. And this is done in collaboration with the Outreach Committee of AFFAS. And then to carry out different activities to understand. So this is again something that we want to do more in the future. And what a lot of work has been done by promoting AFNOA. So we wrote different, several newspaper articles, one proceedings paper. And then at more than 15 international meetings, we actually presented AFNOA in the, in the last year. And this is just one example. I will not have, maybe we can leave this for the discussion. Like on one of these sessions that we organized, in this case, this was during the last year's sixth meeting of the East African Astronomical Society, where we had the session about the challenges, opportunities regarding women in science. And here you can see about the list of the challenges that have been raised. And this took, this was done with more than 60 participants. And then people really actively participated in the, in the discussion. And this is something that we will leave for the end, for the discussions. So it's a list of recommendations that under the board we constructed for the African strategy, EU strategies, and future policies. And we can definitely leave this for the discussion so that we can see if you would like to add more things or, or if we are good with, with the recommendations here. So thank you very much. I will now invite Vanessa to give a brief summary about the importance of the... We lost now some time due to this ridiculous situation. So that will take unfortunately time from the discussion or, or from here. But let me go escape. I think we can just go to the... Okay. Oh, no, 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 sorry. Okay.
That was terrible.
No, 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 it's just faster to airdrop.
All right, thanks for your, thanks for your patience, everyone. I don't think I need to say too much about the awards because most of you are probably at the, at the ceremony this morning. But just the idea with the awards was that we wanted to recognize and to support the amazing scientific achievements as well as the contribution to society that, you know, women are playing in astronomy on the African continent. So that's really the motivation behind the awards. They're 1,500 euro awards, which are coming with, they're jointly offered by AFNOA, which is a, you know, subcommittee of the African Astronomical Society, but also with support of the International Science Program from Uppsala University in Sweden. And it also includes the opportunity, as you would have seen this morning, for those who are awarded to present their work at this meeting. So really highlighting their scientific and, in fact, in Marie's case, some of those outreach achievements. So our timeline, just to go through it quickly, we opened this call for nominations on the 2nd of November. That was open for just under a month. We then sent the nominations to reviewers and in, on the 17th of January. And in the meantime, we had collected some extra information. The review panel met in mid-February. And we then were able to announce the winners of the award on the 2nd of March. And today, of course, was the official presentation of the awards. So just to go through what the process was, and I think half the reason that we're explaining this to you is both so that you know, but also if there's input or feedback from the community on the process, then we'd be most welcome to hear it. So we had 19 unique eligible nominations submitted via an online form. And there was then an opportunity for those who were nominated to supply additional information. And that's because many people didn't nominate themselves, some people did. But if you're nominated by a colleague or a supervisor, then you obviously need to submit your own CV and maybe an extra motivation. And so then the awards were evaluated both on scientific achievement and for, and on contributions to society in two different categories. An early career category, that was within five years of PhD, and then a more senior category. So if you'd like to know more about the criteria in terms of eligibility and in terms of the selection for the award, then please go to the, the URL that's listed there. So I think what was, what really gives the awards a huge amount of gravity here is the fantastic review panel we had. We had 10 reviewers who went through these eligible applications. And they were some nominations from ISP in Sweden. They were also nominations from AFFAS. You can see Majana is one of the reviewers. But as you can see here, we have some really incredible and inspiring people on the review panel. We have three either current or past presidents of the International Astronomical Union, Catherine, Evina, and Deborah. We have Kevin, Edward, and Ernst, who have also been recipients of various prizes themselves. So it really is a way, not, you know, to say, these are incredible awards because they've been awarded by this panel, but also to use the fantastic network that the process sets up to connect with all the people that these reviewers know. And also to highlight, you know, you guys, the inspirational women working on the continent. So now these, this illustrious panel is aware of all of the work that you do, even if you didn't win the award, right? So I'd just like to end with the last congratulations to Marie Kosaga and to Renee Krank-Courteva, who were the winners for the 2021 award. And you can go and read more about these two inspirational women on our website at afnoa.org. Finally, I just want to say that there's been incredible learnings for us as the network in running this process, right? Because we are also now aware of all of the many excellent and inspiring women who are working in the fields in Africa. We've also received really valuable input on the process from the reviewers. And we welcome input from all of you on that. And of course, it's now an opportunity for a joint initiative or for us to highlight the work and the role of AFNOA and the, and the women in, in science on the continent in the networks of these, of the review panelists. So I think it really opens many other doors in addition. Okay, thank you. I'll now hand over to Carolina.
All right. Thank you very much, Vanessa. Thank you, Mariana. And thank you for the grace with which you handled the earlier situation. And I think if anything, this really proves that there's a reason for the existence of AFNOA. So thank you for that. So obviously, after one year, we're not done. We have many plans, some of this, I'm going to somewhat repeat what Mariana said. In terms of activities, what we're looking for, some of them are continuous. But one of the things that we really would like to do is put together a book or a white paper, something about women in astronomy and women in science in Africa that Mariana is leading also in collaboration with other Women in Science in Africa organizations. An incredible network that, that's been built over this last year. And we're looking to publish this in time for the GA 2024. And I think this will be a fantastic resource, also looking at the status and all the progress that can be made. In terms of continuous activities, we're obviously going to keep updating our website. We're hoping to set up a periodic newsletter, keep organizing trainings per year. So last year, we had two CV workshops and a presentation, two presentation workshops. And this is really led by the demand from the community. So we ask, you know, we email the entire network and see, would you be interested in this and that and so on? And we try to be very responsive to what the network wishes us to organize. And obviously, we also want to organize some outreach activities through our membership. There's also possibility for us to, to maybe award some small grants to specific outreach activities because this is really a continental effort. And obviously, the AFNOA awards, we're not 100% sure whether it's going to be every year or maybe biannual or triannual. But one thing is for sure, we're not short of eligible awardees. That's, that's, that's clear. But basically, we want to grow the knowledge base of opportunities in astronomy and related fields for women in Africa and for African women. So this is, this is opportunities for scholarships, for research, for collaborations, and so on. So it's really building a tight network at the individual level, at the professional level, at the institutional level, but also at the organizational level of Women in Science in Africa. And really, our, our guiding principle is really to respond to the needs of our community and of our membership. And so our long-term goals, and this is where I'm repeating a little bit, but in, in the, well, obviously, shortest, shortest term possible. But our vision in the long term is to really strengthen and promote female participation in astronomy and astrophysics and related sciences in Africa, to bring women in astronomy together and to strengthen the links between female researchers. And by doing so, strengthen also the support and the possibility of supervision between senior and young female astronomers. Because in the, in the supervising relationship comes more than just science training. There's a lot of other research skills and how to be, how to be an academic, how to be researchers, and so on. And obviously, through research and conversation, uncover ways to retain women in astronomy and lobby for implementation of retention measures. And as Mariana said, we want to give visibility to the work that female astronomers are doing in Africa and that African female astronomers are doing around the globe. So we also want to strengthen researcher leadership capacities of female astronomers. We want to promote astronomy, space science, and science in general among young girls to empower them to do STEM and make sure that they have role models that they can identify with and look up to so that they can even dream about studying the stars as a living. And we would like to ensure the female participation in the current and future developments of astronomy and science in Africa. So we're ambitious, but I think this first year has shown that, you know, step by step, we'll get there. With that, I think we can open the floor to a discussion. Thank you very much, Mariana, Vanessa. Maybe you want to come and come to the front as well? Okay. Yeah, we can do that, too. I think the sharing is done from, oh, no, it's from here. No, not sharing, I think we're just having a... Yeah, review, okay, all right. Yeah, if we go in calorie view, then we can, I'll do that.
Late, isn't it?
99.
Did I open the chat?
99 chat.
We're cleaning it, okay?
They cleaned the chat.
I think it's being cleaned, yeah.
But we have 99 messages. That's not, let us open the chat. Let us open the chat to see what do we have and how many names do we have? I mean... But we have more than 99 messages in the chat. Ah, this is all from before. Okay. Well, if the person was, the person was not brave enough, I mean, it was not able even to put the name, you know, so... So let us, let us not lose more time than what we already lost from our discussion, from our session. So I think, Salma, you want to, you want to come on this side as well? Yes? No, but also, I mean, we can just, we can just also sit, yeah, around to not, no? Yeah, or here. So the, the discussion that we left open, the time is, as I mentioned at the beginning, focused on the topic regarding the strategies that we can use for promoting, I mean, the strategies that we can use that we empower women in science through astronomy, women and girls in science through astronomy. So this is now really, for this part, we don't have anything prepared. So it's really something that we prefer to get the input and feedback from all of you, all of you who are here in the, in the room and then all the people who are connected through Zoom. So basically, I will, I will, we will take the notes of all the ideas that you have about different strategy, strategies, either through the, whatever kind of activity. So either those things that you are already doing, those things that you think that could be done. And, I mean, some of those we can also use for, for AFNOA later to, to give the suggestions for the network and then to, to work, work on them. So if any of you would, would like to, to share, share the ideas, please just either raise your hand or, or just unmute yourself on, on the Zoom. Yeah, yeah, that's another thing that Vanessa now mentioned. I mean, please also, so this year, we, we want to continue with the virtual training. So at least, again, two free trainings to organize. So you can also give your suggestions, what kind of training you would like to, to have, to see.
Okay, thank you. Your strategic plan is tremendously good. But my comment is, if you include particularly the remote ones, then only in the center, the disadvantaged ones are the more that we go away from the city. So if you include that one to every member country, I think it is beneficial. And also, if possible, try, if, if you include universities to be part of that for the support, I think that is also very important. Why? Because the universities have a female program, special programs for, for, into you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tolu. Yeah, I mentioned that at the beginning, yeah, yeah, yeah. Any other, any other comment? Yes, please. Gracias.
So it's, it's a question that could be extended to a comment. In one of your slides, you mentioned that you'd also like to understand the low participation in, for females in astronomy. So for this, are you looking to work just with astronomers or like STEM fields? Or are you open to extending it to like working with people in humanities and social... Or are you open to extending it to like working with people in humanities and social sciences? Because I feel like those people already know the conditions and the needs that would cause such decision choices. So are you open to working with people from other fields and not just the STEM and science fields?
Yeah, 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 we are open to collaborate with with everybody's. I mean, what I mentioned that that it's something that we would like to understand, it's focused really on the STEM fields, no? Because that's where we we have huge lack of women, you know? So the main question is, what are the principal factors? When we now go from one country to another, from one region to another within each country, what are the principal factors? Many of these factors we already know, but I mean, it's very general, no? So there is, I mean, there is much more research that can be done, you know? So if actually those people, there is, as you said, a lot of research already going on, but also the 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 topic is so big, you know? So if we can actually serve as network that can help in that research, so that we can, in terms of the astronomy, see, you know, how much girls are interested for astronomy or physics and then why they are not choosing that, well, that's an, that's an important feedback, yeah. I mean, it would be an important feedback, yeah. Yes, Nirush, you raised your hand.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Mariana. So no, kind of to make it even a smaller step than what the previous person had commented. And especially because I used to work at Sareo across the road for a couple of years. I was wondering, Sareo is a good example, there are few astronomers, but then a lot more women working as telescope operators, engineers for telescopes and so on. So I was wondering whether we would be, you know, open to getting them in as well for AFNA, if not for AFAS.
Actually, under AFNA, we already have, so it's not only women in astronomy. We actually have it, even when you start filling the form, it said, women for in astronomy. And we, very often, we we mentioned that, in astronomy and all related field. So we actually do have members that are not necessarily astronomers and women and men that are doing research in astronomy. So there are members already that are coming from different space science fields. We even have a few people, I think, from for more, from more like geophysics. And then also, there are, there are people, especially from South Africa, working at, you know, as engineers or data scientists. So there are, I mean, still the smaller number, of course, but they are already there. So we are open. I mean, it's a network that we see that, you know, as every network, it has to be like in a constant evolution, you know? So there are no any really like strong rigid rules that we really have, you know?
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mariana.
Thanks, Nirush, yes.
Carolina? Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to comment also on that. Maybe Nirush has some advice on how we can reach more women who work in the field of astronomy, but not necessarily in the role of astronomers, such as engineers and telescope operators and so on. If there's a, if there's a way for us, you know, to, if he can give us some, some inroads, some connections, so that we can spread AFNA, that would be very appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the issue, Carolina, and Mariana, probably that the people who are not like, you know, research astronomers, in these institutes, might not even have heard of AFAS, let alone therefore come to your webpage. So maybe people working at this institute should just take it upon themselves to recruit the old trade union way, in some sense.
Yeah, yeah, we, it's a question of highlighting more that when we promote the network, yes. Yes, please.
All right. Thank you for telling us about this committee. In the first place, I was wondering if it's just for women, but you said men can also come in. So all the benefit that there are in the committee, so for the few men that you have with you, are they going to also sort of benefit from this kind of stuff, except for the award anyway? All right. But what I wanted to say is, there are some women in astronomers, or I mean, astrophysicists, cosmologists outside the nation of Africa, who are Africans, but they are outside and are doing well, and their membership can contribute to the actualization of the goals of this committee. Is there strategies you have in place to get them in somewhere, because you want to accomplish your goals and anyway?
Yes, actually, during the presentation at the beginning, I mentioned that we have now members from more than thirty countries. And actually, not all members are inside Africa. So we are totally open. We are open, I mean, what we have clear is that the activities that we are doing, they are focused on girls and women. That's the rule that we have, no? In astronomy-related fields or science in general, because we already started extending, you know, like women in science, girls in science in general, through astronomy. But then, so so we we are not restricted either to the gender, either to the geographical distribution. So anybody who who wants to participate, to improve the status of girls and women in science, in STEM, in astronomy, in the future, is welcome, independently on the gender, independently where the person is. So you can be from any part of the world and join a joint network. And then obviously, we do have, as you mentioned, we do have a significant number of young women that are doing, women and men as well, who are doing their MSc, PhD out of Africa, they are origin, they are with African origin, and then many people from Africa. And then we have people from Europe, Asia, South America, US as well, that are just not Africans, but they do care about, you know, women in Africa. Yes?
Hi, Mariana. My question also has a comment of some sort. So I wanted to find out about the barriers that you mentioned. Are the plans to bridge a gap in those barriers? For example, I also want to find out how this particular program is is different from many other outreach and engagement programs out there. The example I want to make is that one of poverty that was mentioned.
Which one?
Poverty as a barrier. What I've noticed mostly in in many outreach and development programs is, yes, we provide the information to people out there, especially secondary level. That's my core focus right now. My question is based on that. We do provide information and maybe there are many outreach programs out there, which let the learners know about the opportunities that are out there. But we we haven't really bridged the gap between them getting into universities. There are struggles with learners who pass really well and maybe qualify for NESFAS. In South Africa, we have NESFAS, so there are other, other schemes, right? But before that, some learners really struggle with even the application fees. Or just knowing what an APS score is in order to qualify to get into universities. When we do these outreach programs, usually it's a maybe one week or one day at the school or with these people. And it's not enough, unfortunately, because you come there and you show them what's out there and we leave. And then they are left there with no resources and nothing else to continue. So yes, they know of these opportunities, but unfortunately, they are not able to access them. So how how are we doing this differently, in a way that is very effective and impactful in the lives of these learners?
Yes. No, no, you're totally right. I mean, you're totally right and we are aware of that. And we actually have that frustration, you know? Every time when we go and do some activities, I mean, I can, I mean, fully identify with what you said, with activities that we are doing in Ethiopia, with STEM, Stanford Girls in Ethiopia, you know? Every time we go to the schools with interacting with the secondary girls, secondary school girls, it's a frustration, because, you know, many of the things that that we are there or that we represent and so on, you do inspire them, but then you cannot solve all the problems that are there, and the problems are huge. And I mean, we cannot solve them in a short term, and we can also not solve them, because we don't have the power to to solve them in a short term. And but I mean, it's an endless work. I mean, to to really now, as we said, we know that the, the, the question of the lack of women in science and then in many other fields, it's also related, it's, I mean, it's of course related. In Africa, poverty is one of the fundamental reasons, because we know that the drop off of girls is there due to the poverty of the society and then many different other factors related with the culture, with, I mean, social pressure and so on and so on. So these are the things that we cannot change from one day to another, you know? So it's really on the long term and it's an endless work, you know? But what we can do with, you know, if this is just one of the very small communities, you know? So we can do what we can do. I mean, we might just inspire those girls that, you know, in one of another way have the chance, you know? We will lose still many others, you know? But the thing is, I mean, with this kind of initiatives, I always think that we have to have a long term vision. Otherwise, we will never do anything, because if we see, oh, the problem is so huge, we cannot change it, you know? Then we will, we will never do, we will do nothing, you know? We just stay with the problem and that's it. So we do what we can. So I I still believe that, you know, even when we go and we cannot give the solution, you know, how they can get a scholarship, how they can, you know, continue with their studies, get jobs and so on. Well, some of them will manage, some of them we can maybe orientate and help, many others we will not be able, but maybe somebody else using our work will be able in the future, you know? So so still, unfortunately, we don't have the the answer on everything with our activities, but but I still believe that it's it's an important contribution, you know? So that in the future, on the longer term, we can change the, I mean, the the scope that we have, yeah. Yes, Carolina, yeah, go ahead, yeah. Whoever wants to comment, Vanessa, Salma, anybody else from the room, from the, from the Zoom, please do it. I mean, it's only me replying, but please, please go ahead, yes.
Thank you, Dudzila, for that question. It's a very good one. As as Mariana said, you know, we we don't, we can't ourselves solve the problem, but we can be part of the solution. And especially, I think, being hungry should not be a reason to not dream. And I think when we go, we're not, we're not giving people false, you know, illusions. And I and I really think that the more we enable young girls and young women to dream big, the more they will, they will be able to go far. And so even if, even if the the people we talk to today won't be tomorrow's astronauts, they may be, you know, interested in science and use that in their everyday life and use that when they have families of their own and, you know, and propagate the the goodness of it. So so I really think that we, you know, it's it's about, it's about inspiration as well and it's about dreaming and and that everyone should be allowed to dream.
Well, one thing that I didn't mention, I think, is extremely important with this kind of initiatives and especially more of those of us who are there, more work we put, we bring together, because in order to change the mentality, in order to change the strategies, that, you know, to bring more opportunities for the women, girls and so on, it has to come from the top as well. So basically, the pressure that we can do, and it's our responsibility to do, on the decision policymakers, you know? If we don't do, well, the question is, if somebody else will do it, you know? So that is also another very important purpose of having then different women in science network, associations, societies and so on. And actually, last year in December, when when we organized that big session under the Europe, Africa-Europe Summit preview, where we had eleven, eleven societies of women in science across Africa, different eleven movements, it was really amazing. I mean, we could see that all of these movements came basically in the last ten years, which is really showing the need, the need that it's one of indicators, you know, of the need for this kind of societies to be there, so that we can create a critical mass among us to make stronger pressure and to to ask for the change, you know? And to bring more opportunities for the girls, for women and so on. So I seek Ketevi connected, I mean, with the African strategy that was mentioned, you know, the second day Lero gave the the talk and so on. I mean, there is also women in physics that will be there. And and through this strategy, again, there is the idea that we actually bring the importance of women in physics and how in physics now we will cross this gender gap in science, you know, so that we can really guarantee that through women, we can benefit the development of physics. I don't know, Ketevi, if you want to mention, I mean, if you want to give any, if you heard the question and if you want to share anything regarding the idea that is there behind Aspap and the Women in Physics group.
Dear Mariana, I think you have said everything. I really don't have a whole lot to add. I would like to really congratulate the efforts that you guys are making here. And indeed, the question is fundamental to the development of physics in general, that we have to make sure that fifty percent of the participants of our population are on board and it's a huge talent. We have to tap into it. And in the African strategy with Mariana and other people, that is our objective. And I think like Mariana said, we do need policymakers to be on board. So it has to come from the bottom, which is this organization and others. And so what we want to do in the African strategy, then we have to look, link up to policymakers to make sure that collectively, they can hear our call to make sure that participation of women in science is at a level that we, you know, we would like to see, fifty percent. It's a long road, but we cannot, we cannot be discouraged. You have to keep working on it.
Thank you, Ketevi. Yes, Kevin, go ahead.
Thanks very much and congratulations for how far you've come in the first year and the plans. Just, just a comment and maybe a question about, you know, everything that that we've spoken about so far, when you talk about women in astronomy, women in science, the challenges faced by women in Africa is, the challenges faced by women in science are embedded in the challenges faced faced by women in general.
Yes.
So how do you see AFNA or, you know, women in science organizations playing a role in woman organization, you know, and trying to address the sort of developmental aspects on the continent that face women in general? Because I think, you know, is there space in the strategy where it's not just about growing women in astronomy or women in science, but also about growing women in general and supporting the challenges, trying to, trying to address challenges faced in general by girls and women on the continent?
Yeah, that's a great point. I mean, Vanessa, Salma, would you like to also, just that it's not only me, if you want also to? Okay, okay. I mean, it's a great point, Kevin. I mean, I fully share your vision. I think in this very first year, you know, we just started, we are still so young, so there there was so many, you know, so many things to do, even just just starting and building AFNA, you know? Like promoting and sharing the, you know, spreading the word and vision and so on, you know? But as I mentioned, we already started a bit, you know, the end of last year, extending from astronomy, going to see what is going on on the continent regarding different women in science movements, you know? As a result of that, what Carolina mentioned, this year, for this year, we have a plan to bring now all these recommendations that came in in December from these eleven movements, invite others that still are there and come up with the document that will be our recommendations. So on one side, in presentation, small presentation about different movements of women in science across the continent, and then recommendation, recommendations under each, you know? In December, that meeting reflected not only fundamental sciences, it went from fundamental sciences to all fields of sciences, you know? Focused on engineering, on technology as well. So basically, that is something that for this year, we have planned, to bring the small document that basically can be used for any policy purposes later on. What is the current status in Africa and where women in science wants to go, you know? The next step would be basically what you are saying, now trying to see how from science we can actually reach together, you know, to other parts that we actually raise different challenges that are there in the community, because we can do that. Nobody stops us to do, no? Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we don't have to start from from a ground zero, right? Because we can build on the work that have been done, has been done already by many other organizations. I mean, if you, if you look at it, a couple of years ago, UNESCO had this big gender in science survey, which we could do on an individual or a country level and even an institutional level. And so, and that's really where, you know, probes a lot of those crossovers between, you know, what we can between, you know, what we can do as an organization for women in science and what generally are the things, you know, that are the barriers to entry like in the world, whether it's, you know, that everybody thinks women should pick up kids from school or that kind of thing. So I think we don't have to start from a ground zero there. And I think as we grow more of a voice in this organization and with all the people backing us, you know, we'll begin to play a larger role in advocacy, whether it's in an institutional level or, you know, or even beyond.
Can we go back to the presentation soon? Yes, maybe not exactly now.
Thank you. And also, I think to add to that, the women we showcase, whether it is through the awards, whether it is through other publications and things, become role models and their life stories. If we have lots of life stories of women in science, those are possibly alternative histories that young women may want to emulate. And therefore, you know, I think if we look at Dr. Marie Korsaga, for example, you know, she's got this award. She is the first early career woman in astronomy in Africa to get this award. Her status among her peers in her country. I think all of this contributes to offering alternative life stories that young girls can aspire to.
Thank you. I think one of the answers to Kevin is maybe during the training that AFNA organized, instead of just focusing on soft skills that is really needed for research, we can also touch upon project management or how to make a business model. But maybe you can use something like TUTWAT reaching astronomy so that it still stays in the scope of astronomy. But then whatever you train during those two hours can be transferable. If let's say that person will want to launch a business in entrepreneurship, but at least now he knows that, okay, this is at least how a business model should be written. So that's one response to that. But then I wanted to contribute about the discussion that yes, it's good to inspire the young girls, but we also need to work harder, maybe even like to convince the IAU because in Africa, there is this lack of scholarship that it starts from PhD. But you really know that there is a need for more master's scholarship. And I'm using an example of my two students who just presented. They are getting afraid that if you don't get anything, you need to go back to work. So it's like you inspired them, they go on the journey, but then you leave them beyond, you're failing them, yet they are really capable to become a professional astronomer. So I'm not saying we need to create like next year or so scholarship masters for young women, but at least maybe bring the attention to the IAU because if you see even in the IAU, most of the opportunity are starting from PhD. I know that, okay, a master's, maybe there is a huge risk that people may still run away or change curriculum. But remember, some of those people, they are really aiming to go far, but they just don't get the support. So you shouldn't forget them.
Yes, 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 that's fully correct, yes. We will have to start finalizing. Is there any comment from people who are connected virtually? Would you like to comment? Yes, yes, please go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thanks very much, Mariana. First of all, thank you very much for that presentation. I'd like to add my voice to what I think Vanessa earlier on spoke about, as well as I think it was Caroline, about advocacy. And this is partly in response to what Kevin spoke about in terms of the challenges faced by women in science being embedded in the other broader challenges generally faced by women in Africa. And one of the things that probably maybe is sort of like an encouragement that we can look at is the fact that there is synergies that can be formed. It is not a lone struggle per se that we are in. There's several other organizations that have been formed by women that are really trying to push the cause of women in society. And it's, there's really the advocacy that we can pay attention to forming synergies with these other different groups as well. Like for example, here in Uganda, there's an organization that has been pushing for workplace nurseries for the women that have kids, but they want to be able to breastfeed their kids at work, you know? And not, you know, leave the kids at home, you know? And there are some workplaces here in Uganda already that are adopting that format, you know, having workplace nurseries. And this is just an example, like even the women that are not in STEM, they have so many ideas of solutions. And if we can just put together our efforts somehow, maybe, I mean, of course, we may not be exactly able to work together on each and every small nitty gritty thing, but when it comes to the broader issues of women in society, I'm sure we can work together with, you know, these organizations that are also on the forefront like us, you know? Join hands and find a way to, you know, make, you know, make a better, you know, picture for the younger girls that are, you know, struggling, you know? How do I go into a career to begin with, besides going to a career into science, a career in science, you know? So forming these collaborations or cooperations and learning from each other could really, really help us. And I'm quite hopeful that, you know, it's not a gloomy future we are looking at. We don't have to wait 100 more years, you know, for things to be better. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Elizabeth. Actually, in the list of the recommendations that I didn't have time to go through now, I think there is no time, no? Yes, we will have to finish. In the list of recommendations that we developed under the board, we actually put one of the recommendations for different policies, strategies that are there to increase the number of the scholarships and also to take into account the extensions due to the maternity and maternity leave so that women do not have to change, do not have to choose between being mothers and then doing their MSc or PhD. So that recommendation is there. What, we will not have time to go through recommendations now and to get your feedback, but we will share, because we didn't do that yet, we will share these recommendations through the network and ask then from the network to submit the recommendations as well from all members. So I think we will have to stop here because of the time. If there is any very last comment from the board members, Prisc is also connected and Somaya, so also you can comment if there is anything and then Salma, if there is anything very fast, quick? No? Salma, Carolina? Prisc, Somaya, any comment?
Thank you much. It is a very good session and the presentation for AFNA work through the community of girls and women and young girlies. And the recommendation will be very good for our first work in AFNA. Thank you for all your presentations and fortunately, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be with you. And thank you for your work, thank you for...
Thank you, Somaya, you are with us. Prisc, you... We don't hear you.
Okay, I was saying thanks to you all, those present online and physically for attending our session. And I think everything has been talked about so far. But of course, this is not the end. We can always keep discussing through the network meetings and to encourage our members to attend the community meetings once we put up the announcements. Through these meetings, we can be able to brainstorm and come up with other ideas that probably didn't come up during this session that we can then use for our policies and policy recommendations. So thank you, everyone, and hope to see you soon.
Perfect, thank you, Prisc. So thank you very much for joining the session. Please join network and then from there, we can continue with discussions. Thank you very much, everyone, for joining. Oh, sorry, sorry, Salma, yes, please, please.
Yes, I thank you and I say congratulations and I am very happy to... I am very happy to join now the board of AFNA. Just to add a point, yes, I think for the membership, we need to highlight how to join and if possible, to define, to define many profiles of membership. Membership about the man who would like to join or the other people not in STEM to join. I think we can highlight for the membership and define many profiles for memberships.
Yeah, that's good for promoting the diversity, yeah? Because we really have diverse members, yeah? Good, thank you, thank you very much, everybody, for joining and hope to see you soon in next activities, some of the next activities.
Sorry, just stay on for a bit. Okay, so, thank you, Mariana. Yeah, thanks, Mariana, and really apologies for, I heard that the session got Zoom bombed earlier. Yeah. Yeah, well, it shows how important your session is. All right, so, yeah, we just have some few quick announcements. The first ones are for tomorrow. So I sent out an email to all members of AFAS. So if you're a member of AFAS, you got your email saying you must register to be part of the Zoom meeting tomorrow. So that even does mean even if you are here, you must still register to take part in the General Assembly tomorrow. We have seen a few people that tried some sneaky things, which is use two different email addresses, right? And we are really monitoring those and we will only take your primary email address, which is the one that you actually registered to be a member with, right? So we are just, we are just putting it out there that we know that people are doing these things, right? So in any case, yes, to join tomorrow's meeting, you will receive, once you are approved, an email with the Zoom link for tomorrow. And again, you cannot share the Zoom link with anybody else. The General Assembly is only for AFAS members only, right? And yeah, we will communicate further process on the voting tomorrow, but the General Assembly in general, you will receive your links and you can log in from anywhere you are, whether you are here or you are attending virtually. Then the next announcement is for tonight, for those that are attending in person. So the bus will be here at 6:00 PM. So you can leave your car here and be dropped back off here again after the dinner and pick up your car and leave, or you can just drive to the restaurant and join us there. So bus arrives at 6:00 here, it will leave at 6:15. Now, those that are staying at the hotels, your transport is still coming now. Then the bus, after it leaves here, will come and pick you up at the hotel and move on to the dinner venue. Sorry? From the hotel, it will arrive at 6:40, right? It arrives, it arrives at 6:40, yeah. Yeah, and like Zara is saying, you can also walk to the restaurant if you want to walk. But, yeah, but, yeah, but if you will walk, please do let us know that we shouldn't pick you up or shouldn't wait for you. It's better, it's better we just pick you up. Thanks, yeah. And Kevin, you got something else, right?
Okay, so some people have asked about galleyoscopes. This is a galleyoscope, it's a telescope that can be assembled. We've got, we've got a bunch of galleyoscopes that were donated for the African continent. So if you want to take some of these back home with you, there's a little, there's a small signup sheet here. Things on it, sorry. You can just enter your name, your name and how many telescopes you're taking, to which country, and then you can take them. They come in, they come in these boxes, these boxes of six. Boxes of six. So if you, if you would like to take a box of six and add to your luggage, it's cheaper than transport, so... So feel free, we've got a whole lot of these. Just come and let us know, you can sign up and take them.
All right, thank you, everyone. And I think that this brings to close the conference part of our meeting. So we move on now to the General Assembly part, which is tomorrow and we look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.